Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge speeches through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who's joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the September 25th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cavajarien, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We'll begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th meeting. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. As we head into the fall, I'd like to share a preview of agenda items coming up in future meetings. During our next meeting, we will receive a presentation on our state accountability data and assessment results. The teams that support summer learning will share an overview and learnings from this past summer. We also look forward to our ongoing conversations on our transformation schools and an update on the opportunity in Achievement Gap Task Force membership. We look forward to a packed fall agenda and continue to engage with the ongoing improvements across the district to ensure our students are receiving high-quality opportunities and education across all of our schools. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Good evening. Thank you Chair Robinson and school committee members. Last week, as you, last school committee meeting, you remember, was a pretty extensive back-to-school report. But this night, I just have a short report and I want to give a couple of highlights from the past two weeks. Yesterday, I attended literally one of my favorite events, which was our ninth annual BPS Attendance Symposium. There, I joined Senior Director of Opportunity Youth, Brian Marks, school staff from across the district who lead attendance teams, our community partners, parents, caregivers, and BPS students. And it's great to have an opportunity early in the school year to recognize our supervisors of attendance and our school attendance teams for the vital role they play in ensuring families feel connected to the school community. We know students can't learn if they're not in school. And as chronic absenteeism rates continue to decrease, our attendance teams will continue to be the forefront of our district's work this year so that rates continue to decline. I want to thank Chair Robinson and Member Skerritt for joining me and the Office of Family and Community Advancement, what we call OFCA, for our back-to-school blast on Friday, September 12th at Harambee Park in Dorchester. Students and families enjoyed roller skating, grilled food, fire truck activities. They got back-to-school supplies. Somehow, I got to call the raffles off and I had two students looking at me on either side, just like pinned on me to call their raffle. And I felt so bad, I didn't pull their tickets. But thank you Deputy Superintendent of Community and Family Advancement, Dr. Anna Tavares, and the entire OFCA team for welcoming our families back in such a fun, warm, and engaging way. The New England Patriots Foundation, we entertained Patriots players, cheerleaders, and mascot Pat Patriot, who visited the Mata Hunt Elementary School in Mattapan last week. There, they announced the school's selection as the New England Patriots Foundation 2025-26 adopt a school program. Since 2021, the program has expanded access to educational opportunities and improved learning experiences for students. At a student assembly, Patriots players and cheerleaders shared their experiences in school and discussed the importance of reading, good attendance, and respect. They also took questions from students. And the Patriots Foundation will return throughout the year with other kinds of surprises and opportunities to support student learning. We're very thankful to the foundation. They've been a longtime partner to the players, to the cheerleaders, for really showing their generosity. And we look forward to their continued partnership throughout the year. On Monday, September 15th, I attended the open house and ribbon cutting of the recently launched Next program. This is designed to support our post-secondary students with disabilities between the ages of 18 and 22 years old. The Next program facility is located in a two-story renovated commercial building on Maywood Street here in Roxbury and serves as the program's home base for participants who will receive highly individualized support with internship placements and employment. The facility resembles a college student center rather than a school building and is more suited to the needs of post-graduates. Next provides support for learning life skills like navigating the community independently, exploring community-based employment, and exploring community-based recreational activities. It's a space for participants to socialize, engage in recreational opportunities and games, and grab a meal. This is an idea that's been literally taken decades to operationalize. It was talked about back in the 1990s when I was here. And we always saw the need and we were just never able to bring it to fruition. But this year, Senior Advisor of Specialized Services Christine Trevissoni, Chief of Specialized Services Kay Seal, Assistant Director of Transition Marsha Fitzpatrick, who's been with the program forever, Next Program Director Alina Swanger, and Commissioner Kristin McCosh, McCosh and our city partners all came to celebrate. And it was just amazing. The students and the parents, I can't tell you, they were just thrilled to have a space to call their own, where they could come together as a community, learn to do transportation on the MBTA, find employment, and learn about different careers, and really be treated as adults. And that is what was sacred about the space. So, very happy that we could make that happen for our 18 to 22-year students. Before I close, I just want to highlight an important event that's happening tomorrow. The ribbon cutting and official opening of the new William E. Carter School in the South End. For those of you who are watching, the Carter School serves students ages 3 to 22 with significant cognitive disabilities and complex medical needs. The new school is truly an incredible place, and these photos don't even do it justice. The new facility is more than 85,000 square feet of state-of-the-art indoor and outdoor learning spaces designed to meet the physical, sensory, and emotional needs of Carter students. The event will begin at 11:00. The mayor will be joining us. And I really hope members of the committee are able to join us if they can. I can't say enough that literally this school, when you step in it, every inch of it has been designed to serve our students. Everything from the therapeutic pool that you see in the pictures to an amazing outdoor-indoor recreational gym area to a rooftop deck that has the ability for students to be outside and to have a series of activities. They have a garden up there that they can take their plants up and down. Even the elevators can actually house an entire class of students in wheelchairs. So, if you have an opportunity, it'd be great to come. But just amazing and congratulations to the whole Carter community. Chair, that's my report. It's really bright spots, many, many, many of them as schools started. And thank you, as always, for the committee's support.
Thank you Superintendent. I'll now open the floor for questions and discussion. Any questions? Ms. Garrett?
You'd mentioned the Attendance Symposium. I was just wondering, a follow-up from our last conversation about attendance updates at the last meeting and what the status is. I know you're, you know, following up on DNRs, et cetera.
Correct. Thank you for the question. So, we're averaging about 92% for attendance, which for us is good. You know, it's strong. We always want it to be even stronger. We had a very intentional system this year with students that didn't report. It was a collaboration between our Student Support Department, our Multilingual Learner Department, OME, Special Education, OSS Department, and our attendance supervisors. And what we've done is to literally go through the list, make phone calls, knock doors in an attempt to really bring students back. I believe over the last, I just had a meeting on this today, and over the last almost two weeks since the DNR period ended, we have had about 150 students rejoin us through those efforts. So, I consider that really a success. And many of them, older students who are close to being able to graduate, who might have been struggling and thinking like, "I can't, I can't do it." So, we will continue those efforts for sure. I think in terms of the overall enrollment, we wait until October 15th to actually give the exact update. That is when we do the snapshot. But we know that last year was a historic high for us. It was actually the first year we had increased. And we had a partnership with many of the shelters. So, we saw a definite increase in population, particularly our multilingual learners. We are definitely not seeing that increase this year. But I will have that data come 10/15 when we actually do our formal snapshot.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Three questions. The first, do we have a graduation update from the summer graduates?
That will be part of the next report for 10/8 as part of the summer school. We should at that point, it'll be past the October 1st rule. I think we can give you, may not be an exact graduation rate, but we can give you an estimate.
And then, the, I'm actually just curious, what would hold us back from not knowing at the end of the summer? Someone graduated, like?
Well, there's still, for some students, they're still finishing credit even into the early fall.
So, by 10/1, they can still graduate for the following?
Correct, yeah.
And then, do we have an enrollment update?
So, much like we were just talking about, we usually wait till the 10/15 snapshot. We are definitely under the enrollment that we were last year. And we're seeing that driven in large part with our multilingual learners. But we wait until 10/15, till we actually have completed DNRs, done all of our outreach, and see what settles in terms of new enrollments for us. 10/1 is also the period when charter schools discharge. So, we also always see an influx of students. So, 10/15, I'll give you an exact, but I can tell you that we are definitely running under last year.
And then, last question. Oh, I remember my question. Last question, staffing update. I ask this every year. How are we doing on staffing our classrooms and particularly in relationship to last year?
Yeah, so we're feeling really good. We entered the school year at 96%, which was two points above last year. And so, we felt really good about that. And then, since then, we've filled even more.
And are there particular areas that are, you're seeing holes or at that point, it's a little bit of everywhere?
You know, it's sort of, it's traditionally special education, but a lot of it is Paris. And it's one-to-one Paris. So, that is the area that we continue to work on. It's also bus monitors. So, it's really that that kind of drives it. As far as classroom teachers, we feel extremely solid in that area.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I had a follow-up in relation to Member Skerritt's question. What are we doing or just have you heard any more about what we might be doing for undocumented students, particularly around a lot of the rhetoric swirling with ICE within the city, things like that? Because I can imagine that that adds to a sense of students who may not be reporting.
Yeah. So, I think on a day-to-day basis, we've been messaging out directly to families. And this is all of our family-facing staff to reassure, "We are a welcoming district, inclusive of everyone. You're safe here. Come, we want you." And so, that has been an ongoing campaign for us of keeping that communication line open with our families. Part of the DNR process when students don't report is to make that phone call home to the family. And if we're hearing things about students and concerns or fears of the family, we really try to work through with that family to reassure, give them contacts at the school, you know, help them figure out, is there a school closer to where they are? Really try to just work through with the family the barriers that might be causing them to come. Same with the door knock, right? Like, you know, when we come, we're coming with information and we're coming to just reassure that every student is welcome here. And it's really well-received and appreciated.
I just want to reiterate what you said about the Carter School. I had a joyful morning at the Carter School. Carter School now has an early childhood program. And I got to be the first reader to a group of three-to-eight-year-olds. And there are many adults. So, it was a very rousing thing. Everyone has to go to see the Carter School. If you can't get there tomorrow, you just need to go to see it because you will not believe what this school offers. This school started the school year with 52 new staff members. So, they are building a whole school and program from the ground up. And when you walk through those doors and you see everyone smiling about just being so happy to be able to be part of creating this new piece for our kids. So, please, come. You know, Michael's been involved since the first day when Mark wanted to make this happen, what, 10, 11 years ago now. So, it takes time. It took, what, nine years for this to happen? And more than that in the thinking, so.
It's very emotional to visit that school and see what we're doing for our most medically-challenged students. It's, it makes you very proud of this district and this city.
Yeah.
And we now have the preeminent school, I would say nationally, for students with those challenges. We have one of the top performing high schools in the country at this point. We have one of the tops, the first STEM-based built school in the Dearborn. The Josiah Quincy is outstanding. You know, we're getting more and more of these new schools that are outstanding and so many more in the pipeline. And we need to just continue that for all of our students.
Thank you. Right. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to address the school committee on school-related issues. Questions on specific school matters are referred to the superintendent. Questions on policy matters may be discussed by the committee later. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 21 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak. And I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please feel free to email your comments for distribution to the committee. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and where you live before you begin. If you're on Zoom, please sign in using the name you registered with for public comment. And be ready to unmute and turn on your camera when it's your turn to speak. To support interpretation, please speak slowly and clearly. We will start with, we will start with our three councilors. Councilor Ben Weber, Councilor Brian Worrell, and Councilor Gabriela Coletta Zapata. Councilor Weber?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. If you just, could I just have one second to say something and then I will start? So, my name's Ben Weber. I'm the city councillor for District 6, represent Jamaica Plain, West Roxbury. Quick, before I begin, just a disclaimer. You know, I have an eighth grader at the BLA who's applying to transfer to BLS. You know, so because my family will be directly impacted by the decisions you make about the exam school policy, you know, I think you should take my comments with a grain of salt. But I say that to illustrate that I'm not only speaking as the District 6 councillor, but as a parent. Sorry, as a parent? No. I'm speaking, okay, I'm back. But as a parent who is deeply invested in BPS. Okay, thank you. I strongly support BPS's efforts to include a broader swath of Boston kids in the exam schools. As the First Circuit said, "BPS has legitimate interest in granting exam school admission, not just to kids who test well, but also to kids who might have scored well on the test if they had come to the exam with the same advantages as kids and families with more resources." I have two issues with the current policy. First, it is written on the faces of the parents I speak to at the Linden, the Kilmer, and the Manning. These families have chosen these schools or been placed in these schools in the lottery and are strong supporters of BPS, but without bonus points, they have largely been excluded from the exam schools. I simply can't explain to them why it should be so difficult for them to access schools within the BPS system. Second, at schools like the Curly where my daughter went, families, including mine, have struggled with the uncertainty of a system that seems to change without much of an explanation. As you consider the proposals that are before you, I ask that you try to keep something in mind. Let's choose a policy that both cements the gains we have made in creating exam schools that reflect our communities and incentivizes attendance at BPS schools. That is why I support a policy that provides bonus points to all BPS schools. Such a policy would reward families who stick with BPS, which benefits our entire community. I have been told by folks smarter than me that awarding bonus points to all BPS schools would be thrown out by the courts. Before you vote on the superintendent's proposal, I think you should at least answer that question for yourselves. We need a policy that promotes exam schools that reflect our communities, not a system that tells parents that their best shot is to leave the system during elementary school so they can try to get back into the exam schools later on. Sorry, this appointed body is supposed to have the expertise and be able to make the tough decisions, you know, free from political pressure. I hope you'll really give this the thought it demands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Councilor Worrell, who'll be on Zoom.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Chair Robinson, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Skipper. I'm here tonight as a District 4 city councillor, as well as the Chair of the Council's Committee on Ways and Means, to speak on two separate issues. The first is to emphasize the letter I sent earlier this month about the breakdown of most recent exam school invites. I urge the school district to study what caused the decline in invites year over year before moving forward with any further policy revisions, especially if the administration intends to step away from the annual adjustments that have been part of the process in recent years. None of the administration's three options would address this recent decline in any meaningful way. And at the end of the day, public schools must serve as a public good. I'm also here as I filed a hearing order last week to begin the conversation on Boston Public Schools FY26/27 budget. I'll be continuing the early and collaborative process with BPS and the school committee on the budget till the end of this year. This collaboration has led to not only the reintroduction of a BPS budget book, but also strong budgets that are reflective of the constituents' priority, especially last year. And I'm hopeful we can continue that in FY26/27 cycle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Gabriela Coletta Zapata is not in the meeting, so we will continue with the in-person speakers. The next speakers are Travis Marshall, Deidra Manning, and Robert Jenkins, and Stephanie Aguayo. Travis Marshall?
My name's Travis Marshall. I live in Rosendale. I'm a proud parent of students at the English High School and the Bates Elementary School. In discussions on exam schools over the past five years, there is one word we return to again and again: merit. Merit can mean virtue or achievement, but in the context of merit-based admissions, what we really mean is deservingness. In BPS, some high schools' students deserve eight foreign language options and some deserve one. Some high school students deserve 28 advanced placement courses and some deserve one. Some students deserve 32 sports teams and some deserve none. Some students deserve a panoply of arts, clubs, international trips, and the benefits that flow from a $76 million endowment, while others deserve to sell candy bars to fundraise for winter coats. I don't think these statements actually reflect the beliefs in this committee, but they do reflect the reality that some fortunate students receive a wealth of opportunities and resources while the remainder receive extra MCAS prep. It's just the way it is. It's just the way it's always been, except when, in the midst of a brief national moment of clarity, BPS decided that the opportunities we sequester in three schools should not be exclusive to the fortunate in this city. The stated premise of this proposal is simplification and clarity. The clearest policy is a guarantee to all BPS students that they will attend to high school with comparable opportunities and resources, no matter what school that is. Otherwise, the simplest policy to shield BPS from bad faith lawsuits is to use a lottery. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Deidra Manning.
I'd like to second the comments of the previous speaker. I'll start by saying, my name is Deidra Manning. I am a single parent of two public school students. And we live in Dorchester. I wanted to point out to the committee members that I think the two-to-six-week delay that is claimed by BPS administrators that they can't change the tiers is sort of a solution in search of a problem. All you need to do is keep the existing tiers and allocate the number of seats based on the number of students in each tier. There would be no two-to-six-week delay if you wanted to do that. And that would prevent the suppression of enrollment in tiers three and four, where there are many more applicants than there are seats. I also wanted to state that there are wildly biased testing conditions laid out in the superintendent's circular that seriously impact the chance of admission for non-BPS students. I wanted to give an example of a student at Bridge Boston. It's a charter school right across from BLA. Students there have to give up a Saturday, they have to cross the street and go to BLA to take the test, the MAP test, in an unfamiliar location without their peers and with an unfamiliar test administrator. They also, in doing this on a Saturday, have to take the ELA and the math back-to-back rather than taking math on one day and ELA on another if you are a BPS student. I feel that that should change. Charter school, two of them, Collegiate and Bridge Boston, have said that they would love to have MAP testing administration. And I feel like that's something that BPS should do to increase the number of applicants. I also want to point out that last school committee meeting, a developmental pediatrician said that there is a lot of bias in grades and that the MAP scores should be weighted more. One other thing I'd like to point out, if you have a 64.8 cutoff for OB two years ago, as a B student, you have to have 51 points. Add in the eight to 10 points that that student probably got, and that means that that student probably scored in the 10th or 15th percentile in MAP. Doesn't seem like a student well-prepared for an exam school.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins. He's not in the meeting, nor John Smith-Sentier. Stephanie Aguayo?
Hello. Good evening Superintendent and school committee members. My name is Stephanie Aguayo. I am a staff member at Sociedad. I am a staff member at Sociedad Latina, a youth development organization in Roxbury, serving BPS high school students. All of last year, Sociedad Latina's young people and our staff members spoke before you all to share our concerns about the lack of a consistent cellphone policy across the district, and our request to make a committee formed by youth, parents, and community members to advise on the implementation of a cellphone policy across the district. We have requested for this policy to support our students' learning needs and relationship-building skills, as well as to ensure that it is implemented with equity and fidelity across every classroom. On September 10th, the Boston City Council voted on a resolution to support a bell-to-bell cellphone policy in Boston Public Schools. Today, we're here to respectfully ask the school committee to take the next step by adopting this policy. We also believe that it is crucial that students, families, and community members are included in shaping how this policy is implemented in each school. Their voices and experiences will help to ensure that the policy not only reduces distraction, but also creates opportunities for stronger community connection within our schools. Our students know their classrooms and their classmates best, and they need to be at the table when making these decisions around the implementation. Additionally, we understand that a parent-university session is being held by BPS on October 15th on social media and its effects on children. The district should be aware that the speaker is associated with the American Association of Pediatrics and has been playing down the harms related to social media on youth, stating that the media tends to use a fear-based approach around this issue. The parents who have seen the detrimental impacts of social media and too much screen time on the mental health of their children think that this messaging is concerning, to say the least. We ask the district to properly vet the speakers on this topic. Again, we urge you to vote to adopt the bell-to-bell policy for BPS and to do so in partnership with our students and families. Thank you.
We will now transition to testimonies on Zoom, and I will call councillor Coleta Zapata, who is now in the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Chair, members of school committee and Superintendent Skipper, my name is Gabriela Coleta Zapata, and I have the privilege of representing East Boston, Charlestown, and the North End on the Boston City Council. I'm here to provide comment on the most recent exam school policy recommendation. After years of thoughtful engagement from District One families affected by the 2020 exam school policy changes, I want to commend BPS for completing this comprehensive, data-driven review. This process reflects a real commitment to listening and learning from the community. The data shows that the current policy has advanced racial and socioeconomic equity, and at the same time, we must also acknowledge areas where inequality persists. I am encouraged that BPS is prepared to adopt meaningful adjustments, removing school-based points, adjusting housing-based points, and adding a citywide round to ensure our highest-achieving students are not inadvertently challenged. These refinements strike an important balance, preserving the equity gains of the past five years, while restoring clarity, fairness, and stability to the admissions process. As a proud alumna of Boston Latin Academy and a product of BPS, I know how life-changing exam schools can be. But true equity requires more than admission reform. It requires sustained investment in staffing, facilities, and support across all of our schools, so that BPS student can excel regardless of where they attend. I'm hopeful that this evolving policy will not only expand opportunity and representation at exam schools, but also strengthen public trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Our next group is Roseanne Tong, Mike Heischman, Sherri Kellyher, and Emily Chapman. Please raise your hands when I call your name. Roseanne Tong?
Hi. I'm Roseanne Tong, and I served on the 2021 Exam School Task Force. I'm alarmed that BPS proposes widening the opportunity gap. I'll reiterate the harm that the June simulations would inflict. Eliminating bonus points would privilege private sending schools. The vast majority of BPS schools had no hope of their students getting invited until the policy changed. Why not allocate bonus points to all applicants who attend public elementary schools? Allocating tiers by number of applicants instead of school-aged residents would result in higher-income tiers gaining seats at the expense of lower-income tiers, making enrollment less representative. Giving 20% of seats to the affluent and powerful would contradict the task force's recommendation of no set aside. Simulations then and now confirm how the set aside privileges higher-tier applicants. All of the simulations reduce already minuscule opportunity to enroll for multilingual learners and students with disabilities. So, the best way to achieve the goals of rigor and representation are: do not eliminate bonus points, do not base tiers on applicants instead of school-aged residents, do not set aside 20% of seats, and serve newcomers and students with disabilities by adding strands and clear, ungamable criteria for those strands. School committee, as you discuss policy changes, I hope you keep in mind this paraphrased quote from The Tyranny of Merit. One way of thinking about what makes for a just admissions policy is to ask, what kind of policy would you choose if you did not know whether you would grow up rich or poor? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mike Heischman.
Let's start. Mike Heischman, Dorchester. My daughter is biracial African-American. This morning, I asked her why she had wanted to go to Latin school. Did she really want to study Latin for five years? She laughed and said, no. The message she had repeatedly received was that Latin was for the best. Latin academy was second, and OB was for those who wanted to study math and science. She had wanted to go to the school with the best. She was accepted at Latin, and after attending orientations at BLS and BLA, she chose the school that had substantially less resources and reputation. A major reason was that the academy looked like her. Years ago, under the leadership of Dr. Cassilius, the school committee voted to make the exam schools more diverse. Right from the beginning and continuing to this day, there has been strong opposition from some white and Asian parents. Today, you will be discussing plans that could, would make the exam schools less diverse. Any decision that would make the exam schools less diverse would be racist. The school department does not discriminate against white and Asian students. Despite minor improvements in inclusion, white and Asian students remain disproportionately well-represented at the exam schools. My daughter did okay at BLA for two, and then attended Boston Arts Academy. This was her best choice since she graduated in 2009. Our school system is highly segregated. We must move away from elitism, which promotes success for a few mostly white and Asian, and feels many children disproportionately black and brown, low-income immigrants, and those with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers are not in the meeting, Sherri Kellyher and Emily Chapman, so we will continue with our next three speakers who need a Spanish interpretation, if our Spanish interpreter can come up. The next speakers are Danielle Noemi, Anya Mejia, and Natali Timatesarias. Danielle Noemi?
Okay, se me escucha?
Sí.
Buenas tardes, muchas gracias por dejarme hablar. Mi nombre es-
Thank you for letting me talk today.
Mi nombre es Danielle Noemi. Vivo en JP.
My name is Danielle Noemi. I live in Jamaica Plain.
Y soy padre de una hermosa niña de tercer grado y un hermoso niño de cuarto grado que asisten a la escuela JP Manning.
I'm the proud parent of a beautiful girl in third grade and a boy in fourth grade that both go to a JP school.
Me dirijo a ustedes para pedir encarecidamente que se elimine el sistema de puntos de bonificación para la entrada a los exam schools que se basa en las escuelas.
Talking to you today to respectfully request not to approve the point-based system to admission for exam schools.
Basado en las escuelas.
Based on schools.
Mi hija y mi hijo fueron asignados al Manning por la lotería de BPS.
My daughter and son were assigned to the school based on the lottery of BPS.
Y con este sistema, BPS los castiga por estar en la escuela que el mismo BPS les asignó.
And they are being punished by BPS for being assigned to the school that BPS picked for them.
Creo firmemente en el valor e importancia de la educación pública, igualitaria y profunda democrática, y profundamente democrática, especialmente en estos tiempos difíciles.
I truly believe in the importance of democratic education, especially in these times.
El hecho que el Manning esté puesto en el mismo nivel que las escuelas privadas.
The same, the fact that the Manning is placed at the same position that private schools.
Me parece no solo incomprensible, sino también una aberración moral.
I don't think that this makes complete sense and is not morally acceptable.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see Anya or Natalia, Natalie, Timate. None of them are in the meeting. Thank you. We continue with next group. Shamie Wall, Emma Yashar, and Anna Dorr. Wall?
Good afternoon.
You can start.
Thank you. My name is Shamie Wall. I'm a Dorchester resident and a mother of a second-grade BPS student in Dorchester, and I'm also speaking to you as an O'Brien alumni. I wanted to come in mostly support of the proposed changes to the exam school admissions. I took a survey on it, so I'm well aware of what the district is proposing. I wanted to first address the idea of unintended consequences. My last school committee meeting, there was an entire hour on unintended consequences. I think teaching our students that they would have gotten a seat at an exam school if not for breeds a level of entitlement that doesn't bode well in building up our community. There's been a lot of conversation around bonus points and getting rid of them, but are we leveling the playing field for adequately resourced schools versus schools that persevere without the proper resources, or are we leveling the playing field against private school enrollment? For example, parents online may have seen the Wrong Clock Academy in Georgia. To guard against outside, excuse me, out-of-state admissions, you must be a Georgia resident when applying. Why not do the same for BPS? Why not make it so students have to already be a BPS student when applying for our exam schools, especially if they are the best and well-resourced in our district? That being said, I am pro-merit. May the best child win.
Thirty seconds.
I took the test to get in, and I think other students should too, though I am pro the lightning round. However, true equity only exists when we properly resource the rest of our schools. Exam schools can't be the only option. We celebrate the Carter and all of its splendor, but it services about 60 kids, all of the best resources and facilities for 60 children. I would like to see the same celebration for more of our schools. That is true equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emma Yashar.
Hi. Sorry about that technical difficulties, but hopefully you can hear me. I'm a parent of a second grader and fourth grader in Boston Public Schools, and I also wanted to speak in favor of the proposed recommendations for a lasting exam school admission policy. They say the sign of a good compromise is when no one is completely satisfied, and I think that's certainly the case here. In my opinion, what's being proposed seems like a balanced approach. It's a reasonable resolution to the chaos and confusion of the past few years. It preserves some of the important gains that have been made, and also by eliminating the school-based points and adding the citywide round, it ensures that high-performing students from all across the city will have a pathway to an exam school, regardless of where they live. More importantly than that, I think adopting this recommendation will provide some stability and predictability in the exam school admissions process for the foreseeable future. It'll put an end to the uncertainty and confusion that families like mine have about what the options will be for our kids. Boston has three really high-quality exam schools, and we should all be proud of that. But exam schools are not the right model for every child. I know I've wondered whether an exam school would be the right environment for-
Thirty seconds.
And so, you know, I hope that moving forward with the recommendation will enable us to achieve closure on this issue, so we can focus our energy and resources on growing and improving junior high and high school options for all kids across the city. Let's put this to bed and move on.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Dorr. Please accept the prompt.
Good evening. You can hear me? Yes.
Yes.
My name is Anna Dorr. I'm a lifelong West Roxbury resident, a former BPS student and a BPS parent. Five years ago, I came before this body to encourage you to act boldly in reframing the exam school admissions policy. While you didn't adopt my recommendations, you did adopt a policy that resulted from a thoughtful, deliberate, and open process. The policy shift has resulted in a more equitable distribution of opportunity across our city. It brings students together from every neighborhood to learn and develop into young leaders with the diverse perspectives of their peers to help shape their inclusive vision for the future. I hoped that policy shift five years ago would also allow us to distribute some of this body's attention to the other schools and students in this district. In preparing for my testimony today, I stumbled on a response I received from then-at-large City Councillor Michelle Wu. In 2020, she said, "This year can be a turning point to create a transparent process and move towards a system where we recognize that all our students are capable and deserving of a rigorous and nurturing education that opens doors to opportunity. We must implement systemic solutions to systemic problems, and those solutions don't stop with our- and those solutions don't stop with our exam schools," end quote. It is reasonable...
Thirty seconds.
...to revisit policy and review whether it is achieving our stated goals. This one has had its due consideration. Today, I do encourage you to make the changes recommended in good faith by the district professionals who've been deep in the data. We'll hear the recommendations later, and while I'd like to see an adjustment to the point system, it has been confusing to parents as it is tweaked each year and feels arbitrary to BPS students who don't receive those points. I particularly hope...
Thank you.
...the recommendation to let the policy lie for a few years.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next group of speakers is MTS Hussein, Mark Banks, and Aiden Foley. MTS Hussein.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Robinson and the school committee. My name is MTS Hussein, and I'm the proud parent of two children at the Manning School in Jamaica Plain, a K-2 student and a sixth grader, and I live in Jamaica Plain. Others have said it already that the package of changes being proposed represents a great compromise in that not everyone gets what they want, but everyone gets something in there. And I would like to speak in support of the package, and in particular around the school-based bonus points, and to encourage the school committee to either pursue what Councilor Weber put forward, the possibility of awarding all BPS students bonus points, and if that is not feasible, of eliminating them altogether. School-based bonus points are inequitable and problematic for several reasons, many of which have been shared previously, but to share some that have come up multiple times. BPS uses a lottery system to assign children to a given school, and the fact that that lottery-based assignment made when a child is entering K-1 or K-2 could have an outsized impact on their chances to gain admission to an exam school many years later is inherently unfair to all kids. Secondly, students from similar socioeconomic backgrounds are advantaged or penalized just by virtue of the particular BPS school they happen to be attending. Third, that in recent years, some families have tried to switch schools when their child was going to fifth grade in order to benefit from the points, and surely this type of school shopping is not what the district wants to see. Fourth, since students are already put into tiers based on socioeconomic differences related to where they live and compete for spots only within that tier, the district is already trying to spread access to exam schools to all children in Boston, so there's no need to further award some students within a tier more points just because of the school they go to. And finally, which specific schools qualify or disqualify?
Thank you. Your time is up.
And that causes stress. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Mark Banks is not in the meeting. Aiden Foley?
Good evening. Thank you. Am I audible?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Aiden Foley. I'm a resident of Jamaica Plain, and I'm a parent of two students at the BPS, one at Manning Elementary and one at Boston Latin Academy. My comments this evening are on the exam school admissions. Thank you for considering the testimony. I'd like to start by commending the committee and the administration for its ongoing efforts to improve the admission process. It takes a lot of hard work and a concern for all the students. It's critical that the admission process be fair, and all prospective students have a realistic opportunity to earn a spot at the schools. Treating all the BPS schools equally is a key change. As a Manning parent, we live this. Our students are disadvantaged versus other BPS students. It is simply not fair or right. Many students at the Manning are assigned based on individual education needs. So I support Daniel's comments from earlier. I think the tiers continue to be a flawed, imperfect interpretation of a student's economic opportunity. Last year's changes made it better. These changes make it better. It's still imperfect. And I'd like to wrap up by talking a little bit about an underserved group of students that really have never gotten a lot of attention in the exam school admission process, and they still don't. Students with disabilities. They are...
Nickels.
Yeah, the exam schools are very difficult for them to access. In 2024, 4% of admitted students were a student with a disability. In 2025, that number went down, and the current simulations don't appear to make any real change there. I think there's a ton of students there who can contribute a lot to those schools and deserve an opportunity to attend them. There's something fundamentally wrong, and I hope that you make an effort to fix that. And thank you again for taking my comments.
Your time is up. Thank you. Chair, that concludes public comment on general comment.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling $903,490. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. There are five grants for your approval tonight, committee members totaling just over $900,000. The largest, the two largest grants will benefit 46,000 students district-wide by supporting our efforts to provide schools with healthy, delicious, and locally sourced food. First, there's a new competitive Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources Food Security Infrastructure Grant, quite a mouthful, totaling nearly $640,000. This will provide more equitable access to local food and support capital improvements. The second is a $203,000 Massachusetts General Hospital Community Health Impact Fund's Food and Nutrition Security Grant. And this is the first half of a two-year grant that will provide funds for procurement of Massachusetts produce and fish for BPS. The remaining grants totaling slightly more than $61,000 will provide mentoring, coaching, and professional development for teachers and principals, expand music and arts education at the Mozart Elementary School, and improve access to cultural programming for BPS Indigenous students. I would offer these for approval from the committee and ask for your support.
Great. Thank you. And now we'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Okay. Dr. Augens?
How are we monitoring the aspects of effective mentoring and coaching for the Improving Educator Quality Grant?
I should ask David Bloom or Marcella to just come up and share what the actual metrics are that we'll be capturing.
Thank you so much for your question and consideration of these grants. There's a few metrics that are being... Sorry, does my voice sound weird to you, or is it just me? There's a few metrics we're considering when looking at the Educator Quality Grant. The first is that it is designed to be improving... Sorry, went back to my notes here. It's designed to be improving hiring efforts with a real focus on teacher diversity and having our schools reflect teacher background. So the race and ethnicity of teachers that are hired into our schools will be one of the key metrics, ensuring that the schools that are sort of farthest away from achieving our goal of reflecting our student body are catching up and making that progress. There's also evaluation metrics that we're going to be reviewing, so the number of evaluations contributed on time and that sort of thing. And then I think the team is still creating some of the professional development process. So I think the... Mostly, I think the effective mentoring, coaching, and professional development is mostly a post-development survey data from the teachers in the program.
So the reason that I ask is that the ultimate goal is always to increase student academic achievement. So it makes me wonder what the district is doing to gather the overall data on, okay, let's look at classrooms that have that diversity with them in terms of their teaching faculty as well, or schools like by that. Or you can even tie it to those who are going through this particular mentoring program so that we want to be able to show sort of that effectiveness of it.
Yeah. I see Monica back there. I won't put her on the spot right now, but we'll take that back to her and talk about how we can use some of the data we have to do that evaluation.
Okay, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
Sent moved.
Thank you. Sir, second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent, carrying on the minutes approved? Now we will transition to reports. Our first, our report this tonight is an exam school admissions policy recommendation. Let's aim to keep the presentation within 15 minutes, and I'd like to remind our presenters to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. And Superintendent, I invite you to give introductory remarks.
Thank you, Chair. And just for clarification in the notes, the last approval was for the grants, not the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure we capture correctly.
Good.
So, good evening. Tonight, I'm joined by members of my team to present the district's recommendations for revisions to the exam schools admissions policy. Monica Hogan, our Chief of Data Information and Systems Improvement, and Dr. Colin Rose, our Senior Advisor for Strategy and Opportunity Gaps, are here to join in presenting the changes and to answer any questions that you may have. Our district's goal regarding exam school admissions has not changed. We're committed to creating an equitable and transparent policy that ensures that all students have an opportunity for a seat at one of the three exam schools: Boston Latin Academy, Boston Latin School, Neil Bryant School of Mathematics and Science. Our recommendation tonight is meant to keep what's working about the policy, the current policy, and fix what's not working well. We think these changes will lead to a system that is overall clearer and more equitable. Under the current policy, there are some students that have very high composite scores, but because of what elementary school they attend or are assigned to or what neighborhood they live in, it can be mathematically difficult for them to receive an invitation. Our recommendation is meant to address that issue, ensuring there is a pathway for the highest-scoring students citywide while preserving the basic structure of distributing invitations equally across each socioeconomic tier, which has worked well over the last several years. As a reminder, for the purpose of this reconsideration of the policy, this is a provision within the policy that calls for a thorough review after five years. We are now at that five-year mark, and as requested by the committee, each minor change over the past several years has been in service of improving the policy to ensure equitable access to all qualified students. In December of 2024, we promised to come back to this committee with an analysis of the policy's impact over the last five years. We presented those findings at the June 17th school committee meeting. Following the June meeting, we collected feedback from the community from July through September at two webinars attended by more than 500 people and from 326 individuals through their responses to our feedback form. There were several reoccurring themes that emerged through this process: the need for a clear and simple policy, the need for high-quality school options beyond the three exam schools, and the need for a consistent policy that will remain in effect for a number of years with a predictable time period for review. We are asking the committee to vote on tonight's recommendations at the Wednesday, November 5th school committee. If approved, we are also asking that the policy remain in effect for at least three admission cycles. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Monica and to Colin, who begin the presentation, and then I will chime in in the presentation at the end.
Good evening, committee. Monica and I are here to provide a brief presentation to review the process that informed potential changes to the exam school admissions process, and then we'll pass the presentation back to Superintendent Skipper to formally present recommendations for changes to the policy. As you may remember, we started with a presentation in the late spring of the recent context and the changes to the policy since the reforms in 2020, as well as disaggregated enrollment and invitation data for the three exam schools over the past five years. Then we presented three simulations based on recommended areas of study outlined in December 2024. These simulations explored three variables: points, a citywide round, and sizing tiers by applicants, which we will briefly go over again tonight. Then, this summer and briefly in the fall, there was some community engagement, which Monica will review in a moment. And then this fall, the superintendent considered community feedback, advice from district and city advisors, the historical context, the stated goals of the policy to begin with, and her own intuition to make decisions on whether or not to move forward recommending changes to the policy, which she will do tonight. I will now pass it to Monica to talk about the summary of the engagements we've had before I briefly review the variables one more time.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. So this slide gives an overview of the engagement process, which you saw at the last meeting. We had over 500 participants attend the two webinars to ask questions and share feedback. Feedback was collected in a feedback form translated in the major BPS languages. This form closed on September 14th and received 326 responses. Eighty-one of those responses were from current BPS students and family members. We also circulated a video that was posted online and shared with different community groups about how to give feedback. We heard loud and clear from the community that they want a stable policy that is easy to understand, easy to explain, and doesn't keep changing. The feedback also emphasized that the district needs to ensure we have a strong portfolio of high school options beyond the exam schools. In the appendix are the themes that we reviewed at the last meeting about the different variables that Dr. Rose mentioned. And the additional feedback responses that we collected since the last presentation, the themes were consistent in those comments. We did hear a lot of different responses that contained individual experiences of applicants from the last few years to support the perspectives that they had.
So again, before I pass it to Superintendent Skipper to share recommendations, I wanted to take time to do one final reminder of each one of the variables for this committee and the public, specifically additional points, socioeconomic tiering, and a citywide round. So the first variable to review is additional points. As a reminder, in the current policy, there are two ways that students receive additional points to their composite score. First, if they go to a school or attend a school where 40% or more of the students are labeled economically disadvantaged, or commonly known as Title I schools, these students receive an additional number of points that is equal to the tier differential, so a number between 0 and 10 depending on what tier they're in. The second is for students experiencing homelessness who live in BHA housing or in the care of DCF, and those students currently get 15 points. So the decision points tonight, really, that we explored were should school-based points be removed? Should school-based points and housing-based points be removed? Or should housing-based points be kept but adjusted? So those are kind of the options that were considered throughout the process. The second variable was socioeconomic tiers. As a reminder, currently, each of the four socioeconomic tiers is home to roughly the same or equal number of school-age students in Boston. We explored the possibility of adjusting those four socioeconomic tiers to instead have an equal number of exam school applicants in each tier. So really, the only real decision point here was should we keep the socioeconomic tiers the way they are? Or should we change them based on the number of applicants? Or should we change them based on the number of applicants in those tiers? Finally, the third variable was the potential addition of a citywide round. Now, as a reminder, a citywide round would be created for students with the highest composite scores across the city, no matter what neighborhood they were in. This could be implemented in, implemented in two ways. Either allocating 20% of the seats at each exam school for the highest composite scoring students that selected that exam school as their first choice. Or you could take the top 20% of seats and give it to the highest-scoring students without a threshold by school. You mean they, you could have more than 20% at any individual school. So the decision points here were should there be a citywide round at all? And if there were to be a 20, a, a citywide round, should 20% of those be by seats at each school? Or 20% overall in the city, regardless of what schools, uh, those students picked as their first choice? With the three variables under consideration reviewed, I will now turn it over to Superintendent Skipper to present her recommendations on the changes, as well as outline the full policy for the committee to consider.
Thank you. And I, I just want to publicly thank Monica, Colin, and also the team. Uh, it's just been an incredible amount of time and thought spent in the whole process. How to be able to get the most feedback and information and to be clear in explanation to the community, uh, and then to analyze the data. And so I just want to say publicly thank you because they actually have other huge parts of their jobs. And this has taken up a, a great deal of time. Uh, so first, we're recommending removing all school-based points. They're hard to explain, they're difficult to justify, um, as you've heard parent after parent say. They also cha, they also change the competition for seats within each tier, but not across all tiers. This also just creates tension competitiveness among BPS schools. And any type of school, including charters and parochial schools, can qualify for the points. Most BPS schools at this point qualify, but there's a small number that don't. Uh, and in some cases, this can even impact BPS families' enrollment decisions at the elementary level. The percentage of students, just to give you a sense, receiving additional points has increased since the policy was first created from 63% of applicants to 73% of applicants, and therefore sort of making them less impactful. The school-based points also created the issue the committee had asked us to address, raising some students' composite scores above 100, making it mathematically impossible or difficult for, uh, other students with high composite scores to receive an, an exam school invitation. Furthermore, on the points, um, our second recommendation is to reduce the housing points from 15 to 10, but to keep those 10. When chosen, the selection of the 15 points was chosen initially to be higher than the number of school-based points, um, which at the time of the policy implementation was 10. Our analysis of the 25, 26 admission cycle shows the actual difference in composite scores for students who qualify for housing-based points and those who do not, and that is 10 points. And so that is what we're basing it on. Third, we are recommending the addition of a citywide round, meaning that the first 20% of seats at each school will go to the highest composite scores. The 20% was part of the initial conversation recommendations from the original 2021 Exam School Admissions Task Force. And after the citywide round, the remaining 80, 80% of the seats will be distributed equally across the socioeconomic tiers. After the citywide round, the remaining 80%, um, again, just get distributed equally across the rest of the tiers. Uh, finally, we're recommending that BPS maintain the current four socioeconomic tier structure, where the tiers are sized by population as opposed to the number of applicants. So I just want to say that again. We're recommending that BPS maintain the current four socioeconomic tier structure where the tiers are sized by population as opposed to the number of applicants. As a reminder, after the citywide round, students were assigned to one of four tiers based on their home address and will only compete for exam school admissions with other students in their tiers. In Slide 10, this slide summarizes the overall policy that we'll be recommending tonight, including how invitations will be distributed and points eligibility. So I just want to review that. We are also not recommending changes to the criteria students must meet to be eligible for consideration for an exam school seat. So consistent with the current policy, uh, students will need a grade point average or GPA of B or higher, rank at least one exam school on their high school choice list, and have a valid score on the MAP Growth Assessment Test. A student's composite score is based on 30% of their MAP Growth Score and 70% of the GPA, consistent with the current policy. And as part of the recommendations that I reviewed a few moments ago, if approved by this body, students would receive an additional 10 points on their composite score if and only if they are experiencing homelessness, they live in housing owned by the Boston Housing Authority, or in the chi, in the care of the Massachusetts Department of Children and Families, or DCYF. Invitations will be distributed as follows. 20% of the invitations at each school will be distributed to the highest composite-ranking students citywide. And 80% of the invitations will be distributed to the highest-ranking students in each of their four socioeconomic tiers. That's the breakdown. Uh, in Slide 11, if approved, the new policy would go into effect immediately, and that would apply to the 26, 27 admission cycle. And part of why we're doing this now and having you vote by November 5th is so that that can happen. The district will continue to analyze each year of students' invitations, certainly make that public as we have been doing and share with the committee. Uh, but we're clearly heard overwhelmingly from families that they want the policy to remain stable. So part of our recommendation is that the policy will remain consistent. At least three years of data has been collected, and when then we'll share that analysis all publicly through this body. The district will work also, as you heard in testimony tonight, to increase access for students with disabilities and multilingual learners to the exam schools. As an example, uh, we could consider, you know, um, first of all, access, just making parents aware of students with disabilities and multilingual learners, having a broader ESI program. There's many ideas that we have for how we could go about doing this. But we will, we're going to formulate an, an actual plan for this. The district will also adjust the timeline for residency verification for non-BPS students and strive to better align to the district's operational needs. Uh, currently, non-BPS students must prove Boston residency by the third Friday in November. This date is not aligned to the timeline for the MAP test, and that creates confusion in general for families about the deadlines. So, um, again, I just want to thank everybody that has done the analysis, just been part of thinking through this. Um, certainly to the extensive amount of commentary we've heard from the public over a long period of time, including tonight's, to those that participated in the Zoom, to those that filled out surveys. Uh, and I'm sure we will hear more feedback over the course of the next several school committee meetings. At this time, Chair, I'll turn it back to you, and we'll, team and I are happy to take questions.
First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Rose and Ms. Hogan, for all of your work in helping us to get to this point, and also to you, Superintendent Skipper. So now I'll open it up to questions and thoughts from members. Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report, your day. Cuando estuve viendo la propuesta de la, de la, para el cambio de política en la escuela de examinación.
When I had the opportunity to look at the policy as it in regards to the change of policy regarding the exam schools.
Me llamó mucho la atención el 30% para los estudiantes-aprendices del idioma inglés.
So it caught my attention when I looked at a percentage, so 30% for all the English language learners, 30%.
Definitivamente estamos conversando, y estas conversaciones tienen que seguir. Pero yo pienso que debe haber un ajuste para los aprendices del idioma inglés, de ponerle tanta carga de que el 30% alto ellos puedan obtener en el examen, para poder estar en las escuelas de examinación.
We are definitely having a conversation. However, this 30% could be a burden, a pressure for them to be able to access the exam schools, but we are having a conversation right now, which is important.
Tomando en cuenta que muchos de nuestros estudiantes son bien vulnerables porque acaban de llegar de sus países, no tienen las destrezas, están aprendiendo el idioma, y el examen MAP, la fuerza que pone el examen MAP definitivamente es solo para saber si los estudiantes dominan el idioma inglés.
So you have to consider that the newcomers, these populations are very vulnerable in many different ways. They do not have the skills. They do not, they do not have the linguistic ability. They do not have the language skills. And we have to consider that the MAP test focuses and concentrates specifically in language skills that newcomers might not have.
Entonces, ¿no piensan ustedes que esto va a ser una desventaja para ellos para poder estar en las escuelas de examinación, tomando en cuenta la vulnerabilidad con el inglés?
So providing this vulnerability in the English language, don't you think that these populations of newcomers would be at a disadvantage in being able to access admission at the exam schools? Don't you think?
Y en ese sentido, me gustaría saber si han pensado en algún plan para poder ayudar a estos estudiantes.
So by saying that, my next question is, have you thought of a plan to be able to support these vulnerable populations of newcomers with regard to the disadvantages they have in accessing admissions schools?
They make good points around kind of MAP. MAP does, you know, part of it is, it's an English test, right? So obviously, if you're a newcomer, uh, that's going to be difficult to overcome in some of the admissions. I think the other side of that is, you know, do we have the programming and supports for students in those schools currently to make sure that they're successful, that they're accessing the curriculum? And I think those go hand in glove, right? So if, if we're, we're considering, thinking about changing the way admissions would, uh, would consider language skills, we would also need to make sure that those schools were able to service in a real way, uh, students that, um, uh, weren't proficient in English. So. Superintendent.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, that, um, what we see in the numbers is that our ELD level three, but more so fours and fives, that that percentage has increased at the exam schools. But our newcomer students need a different level of support. One of the, so one of the things we want to be able to do over the course of the next several years is to identify what some of those supports are, working with exam school leaders. Because that involves everything from sca, from, um, curriculum to staffing. I mean, it really, we have to set it up. But you raise an interesting question about the MAP test. Many of the, the tests are only offered in English. Some have Spanish, but not the other languages. And so this is something we want to take a little bit of time to explore, to see how to be able to address that. Because we, were we to offer it in a language other than English, we don't want to disadvantage any other language, and so that is something we have to consider. But these are great questions, remember, Polanco Garcia? And it's exactly why we say we need to formulate a plan and be intentional over the next several years for particular populations, be them for multilingual learners or special education students.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Here you go.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan and Dr. Rose. I appreciate Superintendent Skipper that you started the presentation really answering clearly what the problem is that you're trying to solve with this policy. Um, we have changed it every year. And so I think there was a potential feeling that it was just time to look at it again because folks may not be satisfied versus that there was a specific issue that needed to be addressed, which shaped and informed the options on the table. So to just recap, Superintendent Skipper, what you shared, um, from my understanding, and I think it bears repeating, that you feel this option ensures that there's a pathway for the highest-scoring students citywide, while preserving the structure of equal representation for the lion's share of the seats across each socioeconomic tier, which was the primary objective and mission of the original policy. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
You said it a bit more Ellen Cooney than I did, but yes.
I just wrote down what you said. Is it also fair to say that the resizing of tiers option would stray extensively from the original intention of the policy in 2021?
It would, and, and I know Colin and Monica will make, chime in on this, but I think from twofold. One is that we see it skew the data even further on almost every category. But additionally, um, were that to happen, the vast majority of seats at Latin School in the predictive data would be taken up in that initial round. Uh, and I, I don't know, Colin and Monica, if there's anything else you want to?
Uh, about tiering by applicants?
Yeah, tiering by applicants.
Yeah, I think i- in any of these decisions, you also have to predict beyond the, the simulations socially what, what might happen. And I think we felt, as we looked at that, that the amount of loopholes and, and ways folks could potentially gain, increasing applicants in their neighborhoods could be an issue as, as well. So it's not just kind of the simulations and, and the numbers being skewed, but, uh, what potentially could happen, uh, because of, of opening up that Pandora's Box.
Yeah, and I know Monica can point out that it would also require us, part of this is to give timely results, um, because we've heard also from parents, they're trying to make decisions when the invitations come out. Uh, and when we, were we to do that, it would set us back a multiple number of weeks. So Monica, I don't know if you want to address that.
Uh, I, I think you've covered it, but, um, essentially, we would need to wait um, until we know who the entire eligible applicant pool is and then, um, determine tiers from there. I think there's the additional complexity of, do you do separate tiers for seventh grade and ninth grade? And what that decision point would look like? Do you put all of the applicants regardless of grade level to make the tiers? I think there's a number of additional sort of operational decision points that we would need to make that could add even more complexity.
Thank you. I also appreciated when you described the 20% citywide element today that you used the word seats. I think it's a lot easier to understand than invitations. I am already hearing people call it the top 20% of kids. It's completely inaccurate. It's seats. I'd like to just also check my understanding that whether 2,000 students or 4,000 students apply for exam school seats, the 20% available seats would not change, correct? It is not based on applicant size. It is based on the number of seats at each exam school.
Correct.
Thank you. We know there have been a lot of conversations around understanding the fluctuation of representation by different identity groups over the years, especially in light of last week's conversation about the subjectivity and potential bias of grading, as well as some of the testimony we've heard from parents over the course of this process. I think it's very important for BPS to understand the role that the 70%, 30% weighting plays in equitable or inequitable outcomes. There can be very little difference between an A minus and a B plus. There can be a huge difference between a MAP score and the 10th percentile versus the 90th percentile. Current policy only requires a valid score, which could be a score in the 1 percentile. It seems appropriate to revisit a 50/50 distribution. So I know that we are at the 11th hour, and many of us are very excited to be at the 11th hour. But I do think it would be important for BPS to understand if there is an opportunity to be more equitable by looking at the role that MAP scores play. Wasn't really a question, so I'll just keep going. Oh, well, I, actually, I would ask, has any, um, simulations or exploration of the balance of 70/30 been done as a part of this process?
Uh, the, that has not been revisited as part of this process. The, um, you may remember the original task force considered a 60/40, a 50/50, a 30/70, and a 20/80 split before landing on 30/70.
30/70 also means 15% by subject, so it is quite small. I appreciate the conversation around the additional recommendation. I appreciate the conversation around the additional recommendations to explore increased representation from underrepresented groups, particularly special education and multilingual learners. Two things. One hopeful data point that I think is not often shared, certainly a long way to go, but that one in five students at Boston Latin School is a former BPS English language learner. It's not something that's often discussed that I think bears stating. And I also note today that as we talk about additional recommendations to make a plan for exploring this, there was an additional motion in the original 2021 policy to commit to, quote, "develop and publish a plan for supporting incoming students and the academic plan for grades four through six generally." I don't know if that plan has ever been developed to explore increasing the rigor of experiences for interested students in grades four through six overall. We currently have a situation where we have more exam school seats than more sixth graders on grade level in the Boston Public Schools. It's an abomination, and I'd like to know how we get back to that plan.
One minute. Oh, sorry. Okay.
One minute.
Oh, okay. So I think a couple of things. I think, Members Garrett, that this is exactly why we first dug in three years ago with Tier One and high-quality instruction materials because of the inequities that we saw across grade levels in schools in BPS that were leading to those inequitable outcomes. I also think that's why we pushed so hard for inclusion as well, for our students with disabilities to have that same access. And so that is all continuing to roll out. And I think we are beginning to see certainly in our literacy data that that is, that is starting to make a big difference. We have grown the ESI program over the summer every year. And one of the pieces that we will likely do is move that back to the fourth grade as a way to encompass like another group of kids, as well as extend the number of weeks for that program. So those are things we're looking at. We're also bringing in advanced math in grades three to eight. This was something that the mayor really wanted to see happen, as did we. And so we've worked jointly to be able to get some philanthropic dollars to support it. That obviously will have broad impact on readiness for the kids because we want to see that readiness as high as possible. So these are the things that we are going to. I think that there were a number of things that might have been discussed and talked about in that plan, even just including what subject areas and how they're done across BPS and what counts for what. And so frankly, we inherited a policy that didn't have much implementation meat to it. And that's what we've been sort of working on collectively to try to bring bear to. But I think your point about the four to six and the focus, it's really pre-K to six, right? Because if a kid has those gaps in the fourth grade, you can't close them by the sixth. So that is really the intent, is rigor and solid instruction and high-quality instructional materials. And that, that is for all learners. I think in the multilingual learner area, you know, we saw tremendous access results. And, you know, we'll be sharing those. But I do think that the new ESL curriculum and the depth of PD that we've been doing and the hiring of bilingual staff, these are all things that make our, you know, a much better situation for our multilingual learners to get access to grade-level material. So it's really, all of this has to work together. And one thing we will be doing is documenting a plan for these particular areas that we're talking about, which wasn't necessarily done before, but will be done this time.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Skipper. And I think that it would be helpful to understand the connection between ESI participation and eventual enrollment and performance, and would also encourage potential philanthropic dollars to explore enrichment programs during the school year that could be free of charge for students, especially as we look for ways to draw folks back to choosing BPS. If there were things after school and on Saturday that could go above and beyond even grade-level Tier One instruction, that would be fantastic. As, I also just want to point out a positive change that shifted several years ago that I just want to take this time to commend, which was the evolution to in-school testing for BPS students. We had public testimony about the challenges of testing on a Saturday, and that used to be the experience for students who had, our own students who had to travel to other schools, who sometimes weren't able to get there. And the fact that the poll has expanded so much because it's any student in our schools that can take the exam is to be commended.
You just reminded me, Members Garrett, but I do want to applaud the, all three exam schools and their leaders and leadership teams and staff because when we, when we speak with them about the kinds of supports they're offering to the students, when the students are admitted, both in the summer, they're admitted and then throughout the year, including Saturdays, it's an extensive amount of support that is provided in each of those exam schools. And that happens with real deliberateness on their part. And that is clearly making a difference because when we look at grade and retention data, we're seeing very positive outcomes. So I just, and I know you were, you were there as well, and you probably had something to do with starting that as well, so.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Where am I starting? I'm remembering now. I think, two things really quick. I think, I always find this conversation somewhat sad because I never think we're actually talking about exam schools. I think it's all on the backdrop of families saying they want a rigorous option for their kids. And so the conversation is much bigger than three schools. It always leads me to the same conversation that I think we need to have. There are, right now, five hundred families who don't get into an exam school. And that is, that we have a, the signal of demand and we have the capacity throughout the system, space-wise, to add new seats. But we keep making a decision not to do it. And I think, I, I just think like we have to, we have to clarify for folks why, when there is demand, we are unwilling to meet it. And so I'm just naming that because I think it's part of the broader conversation. And I think part of that is connected to, Members Garrett's point. It's like when you have a system where less than thirty percent of kids are reading on grade level, there is a hunger for families who have a, who has a child, who is proficient in various subject areas, to feel like they want their kid to meet a challenging education and might be experiencing. I think it's real data when you hear the voices of families who might be experiencing that their on-track kid is not getting the push that they need. I think it's much more of that than we give this credit for. And, and so I just think it's, it's something for us to hold. And I think the development of new seats is part of that conversation. The same way if we have demand for pre-K seats, we should meet them. I hold this question of like, if there's demand in the system for a seat that doesn't exist, whether that's for multilingual learners or for kids with special needs or these types of seats, how do we not create it? We are not space constrained. So I'm losing my thread, but that's where my thought sort of starts. I do have questions, though. First question I have is, has there been thinking about the, the absence of the ten points? And then the implications for, I think my mic turned off, but the implications on Boston families who do not attend Boston Public Schools? And the sort of projection of increase we would see in applicants to exam schools? Like, has that analysis been part of this? Because we are seeing, the data where, the analysis we're seeing is, is, is based on this idea that the decline in out-of-system families would stay the same. And one could easily argue that if you remove bonus points, you make, you change the psychology of a private school family to believe, oh, well, there's a easier chance for me to get in, which then in turns increases the number of, of families who are applying.
So I think, you know, we've talked extensively that one of the challenges in looking at the data year to year is that the applicant pool is different year to year, and it is based on behavior. And so how people interpret the policy or the changes that the policy have made is going to change year to year. So that is certainly possible. I think one of the things that we've seen, though, is that, both inside and outside BPS, that the number of students getting points continues to just increase coming from schools. So I, I think at this, you know, when three out of four kids get points, it's sort of like the points just don't have the same impact.
But only from inside the system or from outside as well?
Monica, did that include the?
The points are not limited to just students in BPS schools. So some of our charter schools and parochial schools also qualify for points if they've, if they meet that forty percent threshold.
But did that increase to the seventy-three percent? That was all-inclusive of any school, right? Okay.
Yeah.
That was, I think, his, I think, in his question.
And then the second question, or third, I think I'm on. Has an analysis been done on the current recommendation for its ability to withstand other legal scrutiny? Like, is this part of, as we're bringing this forward to this body to vote on, like, has there been this analysis around its, its ability to withstand sort of broader legal scrutiny?
Um, we've, you know, as we do with all policy recommendations, we always vet them through our legal advisor, and nothing was raised.
And, oh, am I on time? I'm doing all right. I have one last thing. I think part of why we're having this conversation is definitely based on the really thoughtful frame that you gave at the top, Superintendent. But I also think part of why we're having this conversation is because every year, we have actually had to force a hand to look at the policy and make changes. And every time, it's been, we're not doing this now. From a policy lens, like, I don't think that's how good policy is made is by saying, we won't touch it for X number of times. I think that's really good for policymakers, but not great for constituents. I think there are a lot of unknowns around how the policy changes behaviors. And I'm just saying, on a personal level, I don't feel comfortable making a commitment to any policy that impacts kids where we say, I won't, we won't touch it for three years. Like, if there is a, if this brings a dramatic shift in how people behave outside of BPS and inside, I actually do think it is worth exploring. Because the beauty of this policy is it's not really scientific. It's just something we've created. And I've said this in years past, like, that gives us, I think it is encouraging for us to say, we're going to look at it every year and make sure it's doing the thing it's supposed to do, with all the same goals of making sure people feel clear and, and understand what the direction that we're going, but that we're not allowing unintended consequences to break the goal.
May I respond?
Yeah.
So thank you for that. I, I think that the, the reason that we are suggesting the three-year timeframe as opposed to the five is, to your point, five years becomes almost impossible to feel like you can adhere to that. However, when, because it is the applicant, it is, it's a simulation that we're really using in, in, in a predictive way, it becomes like quicksand year to year because it is based on that applicant pool for that year. And so what I think we have felt increasingly, I will say, I have felt increasingly troubled by, is making changes every year. Because it feels as if we're trying to plug a hole here, plug a hole there, and then all of a sudden, when you've made a bunch of changes and you get a difference, as we saw in some of last year's data, it's very hard to like analyze and determine, was it a cumulative impact? Was it one particular factor that was a tipping point? Like, what exactly caused it? So it's the same reason why you wouldn't change a test year to year. It's like you need to have reliable data to base the change on. And I think that's the request, is that we would like to have three years of stable data with these changes if the committee is, is the will of the committee to make the change and the recommendations, on which to then come back and be able to say, here's why we are, we are asking to change these things because we now have three years of solid data. We don't have four years of solid data right now. Every year represents a change, and that just becomes very difficult, like, to be able to come to you and, and give you good information. That, I think that's really why. But I totally understand it. And, you know, we work in a business where we don't want to harm children at all. And so when you see something in data, you do want to respond to it. I do think these changes are coming after deep analysis and thought of what we've heard and seen in the data the last three to four years as a step that we believe we can take, that over the course of the next couple of years will at least like surface, like the role of the points, the role of the carve-out, like. So it's, it's tough. It's, it's just, it's been very difficult the last several years to come to you with these. But again, it's, we're here for the committee's will as well. And so when the committee says we want to change or we want you to look at it, it's our job to do that, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, off of the heels of that, I have to say that because we've changed it, at least made one minor adjustment every year. And I can't say whether it's minor or major because you need the data to be able to say whether or not it's a major or minor effect. I had trouble sort of trying to reconcile, particularly as the data is broken down by race, why am I seeing this, the movement from the current policy at twenty percent for black students to fifty, fifteen percent, you know, this year? And it's because we don't have two to three years of data that I don't know if that's related to a policy change that we instituted last year or if that's related just to some other factor. And that's what makes it challenging. But that is actually my question. Has, have you all delved into that a little bit more to try to figure out why that might be? And particularly also for our Latina students too, because they also saw that drop as well.
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things that we've noticed in digging into the data. And I, for all the reasons you all have pointed out, I don't think we have a definitive, this is the piece that we think caused different changes. But some of the things that we noticed is, the applicant pool did grow in the twenty-five, twenty-six applicant pool compared to twenty-four, twenty-five. That growth primarily came from Latinx students as well as a smaller group of white students. So for our black students, their share of the applicant pool last year got smaller as other groups in that applicant pool got larger. We also looked at the GPAs and composite scores of students and just noticed overall with all groups that we saw, we see composite scores going down over the four years of applicant pool that we're looking at. And additionally, when we look at the distribution of grades, for some groups, the grades tend to be relatively stable. And for black students, we saw that distribution of grades shift a bit to be lower than the prior years. Additionally, as I think has been referenced a couple of times, the number, the percentage of applicants who are getting those points has also been increasing, also having an impact on who may or may not be getting invited. So I think there's a number of different factors we've noticed. I can't pinpoint sort of which one seems to be the reason that we saw different demographics than I think what we were expecting based on simulations that we had run.
And then my, my second question is also going back to, did any of your analysis also include looking at different percentages for the citywide rounds? Or school rounds as well? So instead of twenty percent, did you look at ten percent versus?
Yeah.
Uh, we did do some analysis looking at a ten percent citywide round or a twenty percent citywide round, so.
Yeah, it didn't really shift it very much. But I, I do appreciate your comment about, about the question of the, what exactly was impacting our percentage of black students. And I think we have a lot of work to do on grading in our district. And so this is something that I think sometimes, as you're going through processes, you unearth something you're not expecting to find, and then you find it, and then you are morally compelled to follow it. And so I think this is an area that, that And so I think this is an area that the team is going to be supporting to look at more deeply as to where and why that is happening.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know my time went already. I just have to say, to hear that the greatest variance is among the population of students that saw the greatest decline. I would like to repeat that I do think it is warranted to consider something different from a 70, 30 split, even for a simulation. To look, we know the history of of bias in grading. We know how much that can be controlled by schools and by parents. And while grades are certainly a nice proxy for hard work and and some other things in most cases, you know, MAP is a very reputable test that is nationally normed and could draw out some students who may not be thinking about exam schools at this time. I just, I I feel, hearing that, I feel even more uncomfortable not exploring such a major lever of the policy for another three years.
I'm sharing the same curiosity, just around a simulation.
Monica, would we be able to do that relatively easy?
We have, we can, happy to look at analysis that the committee is interested in.
Thank you very much, though.
Need to know what the combinations are that we're looking at.
An equitable split potentially. Just to at least know the direction that it's moving. I mean, that would give us a sense of whether it affects the composition of the of the student body and if it has any adverse effects to the goals of equity.
Yeah, and I would, I would actually, not that I'm looking to give you more work, but I would just suggest not looking at the one year. Because my nervousness is that we're seeing this. And like, I mean, I'm not Monica. I'm not a data person in that way, but I'm like a common sense data person. And so it makes me very nervous to know that each year, because the applicant pool is different, we just see different impacts by different things. So before thinking about the magnitude of that change, I would feel uncomfortable if it's based on one year as opposed to looking at a trend. Sorry, Monica.
We have, we have three years of applicant data where we have both grades and test score.
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, and apologies.
So this has been an excellent conversation. I've really enjoyed the questions and comments. It's the beauty of getting to go in at last. You don't have to repeat questions that others have so thoughtfully asked. I, I, so I'll just say that, you know, when the task force that Ms. Garrett was a part of and and others who testified tonight did a tremendous amount of work, but it was really looking at other cities, what worked, what didn't work, and doing simulations and guesses in effect, right? And so that's why the first point of the 10 points that we adapted, those were just chosen, the 10 and the 15, as what we thought the difference in composite scores were. And and we said at the time, then, we were not going to change it for five years. But because we did see some glaring things show up, this committee did decide to make some changes, for example, in the the 10 points, making it instead what the composite change was, et cetera. So it's, it's been a combination. I I hear exactly what Mr. Cardette heard in is the same. It's like, as a policymaker, I hate saying I'm not going to touch it for three years. And yet we hear from parents, they want that, right? Because they want the stability, but we feel an obligation to step in if we see something that's really out of the norm of what we were expecting. I do think, and I, and I'm so thankful to Dr. Rose and and Ms. Hogan for their work on this because these are not, as opposed to at first, where it was based on changes that we were trying to make our exam schools more representative of all of our neighborhoods, which was a key goal, right? And we were making expect, we were setting expectations. Now we have some real data. And so this is about fine tuning, in my mind. And, you know, words we have heard tonight in public comment and in others talking about this is, yes, we want the stability and we want clarity and we want transparency. This is also a compromise to a number of folks. And I think it's a thoughtfully put together presentation. I share with the others that I am intrigued to see what a 50 50 would be. And I cringe, Ms. Hogan, because I know that's more work for you. But it'd be interesting to see for what Ms. Garrett has pointed out about. And we talked about, Dr. Rose, with you and others last week about the last meeting about the potential in in grade in how grading is done, both between our school, within BPS, and compared to private parochial and charter schools as well. So I think that would be an interesting thing to see. But directionally, this is this is, in my mind, it, we have heard the feedback. And we are preserving the goals that we have had while still making appropriate tweaks to it. That also, you know, the the chair and I in particular have shared for many years concerns about students with the highest scores and yet being being blocked out. And so I think it, I think we move towards that while still preserving the overall goals that we have aimed for. And so I look forward to seeing the results of what has been talked about tonight. And thank you for your work on this.
I want to thank all of you all for all of your your comments. You know, this is a topic that is always difficult for me because I hear all of the different aspects of what it is. You know, I have been probably the one person who said from day one, please give me a lottery and put everybody in there who, you know, qualifies and then let it be. We, we, we make everybody else get into their school by lottery. That's how we choose schools for everyone in the district. So it's interesting that when we get to these schools where we're skittish and don't want to do that. I'm also the strong proponent about, you know, what are we doing K to six? K to three, four to six, because that's getting us ready for this big opportunity at grade seven. And if we haven't invested at every single year. Yeah, we know, we know kids come into the district uneven, that there's some kids from birth who are being shaped to be able to have this opportunity. And we know there are others who, they're coming to us and it's our responsibility to make sure that they are ready for this. So, and it, and it's hard when our conversation is continuously focused on this one moment in time. And it's been five years. And we have not made the improvements to grades K to six. And so some of those kids who were just starting in our district when we started this policy won't really be having any better outcomes in terms of being prepared to take seats here. And so I think that's something that we have got to push ourselves forward to. We know that people want these premium seats. And I don't know what the percentage of seats to student body it should be. Some people say, let's give them more seats. My issue is, we've got 32 high schools. Why aren't we putting the pressures there to make sure those seats are equally competitive and drawing parents in? Or, you know, what else can we do instead of just making all of this about three schools? And really, as we all know, it's really about one school, that people want more seats there. But I think what we've got is a decent compromise. I mean, it's, some win, some lose. You know, it's, it's never going to be the perfect policy unless we make every seat a seat at Boston Latin School for the whole district. Then everybody would be happy. Maybe not the people at Boston Latin School, but people's perception, if that's what they want. Whether they feel they deserve to be there or they just want the ability to be there.
I didn't know so many people were interested in taking Latin.
Well, that's it, you asked them.
I can, I can speak to that one for a long time.
That seems to be the least, it's like, why do we have to take Latin is what I've heard since.
Wonderful language.
So, you know, but the issue is that, you know, how do we, how do we make the district better? And how does this next step give us some ability to take another look at the policy? But where is the commitment from this body to say that, okay, we've got to step back and figure out, you know, both how are we supporting our other high schools to do their best job? But how are we making sure all of our students are going to be best prepared to take a quality seat? That there should be there for them in any of our high schools and be proud that they can go to school X, Y, or Z and feel that Boston's giving them a decent education? We will come back to this. We will have a week in between, so we will get public comment. And our next meeting will be on the eighth. We'll have more, and then we will vote on this on the, on November eighth, on November, sorry, November fifth meeting. So thank you for, again, all the work that you've done. Thank you for taking on this additional simulation to help us to sort of understand impact. And move on? Do we have public comment?
Yes, we have two speakers on public comment.
All right, so we'll now return to public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deirdre Manning is the first.
I introduced myself previously, so I'll jump right in. I do think it's a bad idea to let three admissions cycles go by without any change. There was really no meaningful engagement of the policy flaws after the June meeting. It was, a form was posted on the website and directly emailed to BPS families, but as far as I can tell, was not emailed to any other families, including those of the listserv that you have collected emails on for people who are interested in updates on exam school admission. I have a daughter at a charter school, and none of the families received any direct email from BPS requesting their information or their feedback. So it's no wonder 81% of only 326 respondents were BPS families. There were only two webinars, and there was no transparent Q and A. So you had to put a question into a Q and A. It was not sort of put up there publicly. And the folks who were running the Zoom webinars would then just put out the questions that they chose. So as far as I can tell, there was not a whole universe of questions that were asked. That, I think, is highly problematic. There should have been open forums where people could come. There could be some questions that were asked and people who were given an opportunity to respond again to the answer that they were given. There's been no talk or recommendations or even commitment to review the superintendent circular, which has inequitable testing conditions, as I have testified about very many times.
30 seconds.
For non-BPS students and a very biased policy on the conversion for standard-based grades, which is only used for BPS fifth graders and not non-BPS students. My daughter's own composite GPA was depressed by four entire points. That's in addition to the eight points that she did not receive because she moved to a non-title one school for fifth grade. And there's still no data on student outcomes. It's basically been given as a side hustle for grad students. That information's vital.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Eugenia Corbo on Zoom.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eugenia Corbo. I'm the mom of a student at BLS and a student at the Uman Academy in Boston. I want to urge you to pause and take more time before you make any changes to the exam coordination policy. We need more meaningful community engagement that is part of a much wider discussion that involves ensuring quality and fully resource options for all students. First, as Deirdre just described, the process has been fast and sloppy. Minimal input requested over the summer. Many families had no idea this was happening. This is the stark contrast with what the task force did in 2021. This new proposal is being rushed forward without what I think is a proper level of community engagement. Families deserve careful, transparent processes and not decisions made at the 11th hour. And secondly, I I don't think we have seen all simulations. All options presented always were changing two variables at once. I'd love to see data for for the simulations that don't change both on one variable at a time. Because we really need evidence-based policymaking and not wild guesses. And third, we all know what a 20% citywide tier ultimately means. And I fear we're going to be back here in two years trying to fix a drastic demographic shift that these new changes could provoke. And I agree with you all, we need stability, not policy reflection. And finally, most importantly, I am really against eliminating of school-based points. I think points should be assigned to the individual students who are at a disadvantage. Why would you take points away from a child that wakes up at 4:00 a.m. every morning? Because the parents need to go to work at that time, or attends an under-resourced school with 90% high need students? Because that is the reality of some kids at my son's school. Disadvantage comes in many forms.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Right, thank you. Is there any new business?
Question. Do, will we give public reports about our working groups from the previous, from the previous year? At some point?
At some point, yes.
Oh, I'm just wondering.
Okay. We'll talk more about those during the. Yes, we will. Okay. That concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, October 8th at 6:00 p.m. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.